I'll call a meeting to order. Please help me in the salute to our flag.
Pledge allegiance.
That all worked out well. Mary Lou is here. Welcome all to the town of Rochester. Is anybody here? Thinkerist self-storage.
I'm here. Eric Redding with Bergman.
This would be a public hearing, John, so you should open the public hearing.
Eric, you want to just give us a little rundown on what we're doing and where we're at?
Yep, so what Tom is proposing is two additional self-storage unit buildings at the rear of the property. One is eighteen hundred square feet and the other is four hundred and fifty square feet. So we are within the rear yard setback by twenty twenty-two feet. So we had to go to the ZBA to get an area and then we came back to the planning board for site plan and special use permit approval. And we were waiting last month to receive comments back from the county planning board review. And they came back and said they didn't have any comments. So now we're up for approval tonight, or at least for a vote tonight. And Jonathan sent around the resolution for the project.
I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
I'll second it. Smallsley, a second.
Opened by Doug Hart, seconded by Don Smalls. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak about the Thinkerist storage facility?
First was made by
Doug Hart.
By Doug Hart and then seconded by Donald Smallsy.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak about self-storage? Lastly, is there anyone that wishes to have any comments on the Thinkerist self-storage? Give it eight one oh nine, two oh nine, where we're sitting.
Don Smallsley makes a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
We got a motion by Don and a second by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Karen? Does any board member wish to mention anything on this storage facility?
This is Don. Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Tom on the improvements that he's made there. And it really is an addition to the town. So I want to thank you for the work that you've done and wish you good luck in continued endeavor.
Yeah. Yes, it is a beautiful building. I'm going to skip some of the whereses. We have a resolution. And I'll read it and the board can decide whether or not they wish to go with it. We have little letters and so forth.
Mr. Tusselino, if you'll let me share my screen, I can put the resolution up while the chairman reads it.
Okay, just hang on a second.
Where did you put the line change? Where'd you go? Where'd you go? There you go.
You know it?
No. I'm here.
I'm not making.
I don't see it.
Okay, Jonathan, you should be able to share it now. Okay, here we come. Eric comes.
Yeah, go on down to the third from last, fourth from last, whereas whereas the referral to the Ulster County Planning Board was required for the proposed special permit used pursuant to the Ulster County referral guide agreement between Ulster County and the town referral column letter indicating was received on date of 30 March fourth, twenty twenty. And whereas the planning board considered the application submitted by by the applicant in support of the proposed action along with the comments of its consultant made via memorandum. Memorandum are incorporated herein by record. Whereas at its meeting held October twentieth, twenty twenty, the planning board upon review of the entire found the proposed action to categorize as a type two, which requires no further environmental review. Whereas the planning board held a public hearing for this special permit use March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one after the public notice. The Town of Rochester Planning Board hereby grant special permit and site plan approval as described above for the Thinkerist self-storage expansion, subject to the conditions, limitations, and restrictions set below. No changes, erasures, modifications, revisions shall be made to any site plan after approval and endorsement by the planning board. All fees, including consultancy, shall be paid. All conditions of previous planning board approvals shall remain in force.
And I should just note that that third point, John, is what you asked me to put in this morning. I don't think everyone had seen that in advance, but it's just a boilerplate sentence to make sure it's understood that conditions of prior approval still are in effect.
There any comments on the resolution by the board?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it. Frank?
All in favor?
It's Paul and Frank.
Oppose? None? Motion has been carried.
Okay, and I just emailed that to the building department so that you can fill it out and put it in the records.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Good night.
Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody.
Awesome.
Welcome.
Okay, the flower and gift is a sketch plan. Did the board from the architect, the engineer? We have three sets of plans, different sets. Nadine, would you like to just give us a brief rundown of where we're at?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So it's been a while. I know we were, you know, presented this to you guys last fall. And we did make a site visit in November of last year and then came up with some options. The main concern was with meeting the Route two oh nine design guidelines and the issue of parking in the front yard as opposed to the rear yard and the side yard. So after our site visit and gathering a little bit more information, we did submit three different options. The first one, very similar to to what we presented originally. Just showing some more landscaping up front. The second option is very close to that, but the third option really attempts to get the parking more in the side yard of the lot. Even though the building is set back from two oh nine a bit, the parking is proposed in the side yard of the lot fairly to the side of the building allows outdoor display and landscape area in the front yard. So I don't know if everybody got to see those options or not. I'd be happy to share the screen if anybody wants to, if anybody has any questions or wants to pull it up. But I know we did get comments and the recommendations from Jonathan, which, you know, seem very agreeable and favorable to the board, for the exception of option three. The number of parking spaces in the comment is that we did our calculations based on the retail area of this building only because a lot of the building for this type of business is storage and preparation. So that being said, we show that there's enough parking for that square footage. So that's something for the board to discuss as well.
The options, did the actual person that's going to be living, the applicant, have one option heard?
Darlene is on. We ran the, all the options by her. I believe options three is one of her primary ones, too. Because option one and two, the layout of the access and the parking was based on plans that we received from Benarolarios, what they are developing for the sidewalk program out there. And they had shown the access in the very center of the lot, which really is not ideal for this small piece of property. So if the board is in favor of option three, we would definitely reach out to Benarolarios because I don't believe that those plans have gone out as far as bid or anything like that. So we would reach out to them for some coordination and hopefully work with them. I know we had met with John Riley from New York State DOT prior to even making our initial application. And he had no preference at all where the access went. There was no concern about site distance or the other intersections. And our original site plan did show it at this southwestern corner of the property. So you know, unless Darlene has another comment, I believe that that was her choice as well.
Does any board members have?
Yeah, this is Don Smallsley. Looking at it, Nadine, I was just wondering whether we could put the employee parking behind the building. I didn't know if there was enough room to retain a parking spot there, but yet still get room to go around. And even if it's a gravel parking spot in the back, that way it would provide an additional parking spot other than employee parking. That was the only thing that I saw there, that as a possibility to increase the parking a little bit. But again, not knowing what kind of room there really is there and it's being a sketch plan.
Yeah. It's definitely very limited to the west and to the north, basically the left and the rear of the site. It drops off significantly and there's variance, kind of ditches and things like that that really are indicated on here. But it does drop off maybe during the construction of a building. You know, possibly they would be gaining some sort of gravel access to, and that's something that we can consider. The building itself, the size and the footprint, I think is very preliminary also. So based on a final design of the building and some other items, it may be possible to push it back a little as far as kind of having an access. I don't know what the slope getting there and/or the size of the parking is. But it is always good to have some sort of access around the rear of the building, even just for back of house kind of equipment. So that is just something we can definitely consider.
Yeah, I would say if you could take a look at that, you know, possibly move, shifting the building a little bit further to the northeast or something, just enough to get a, you know, an access road around it and back and still maintain those five, at least five parking spots for the public if the employees could be put, employee parking could be put in the back. Just something to look at, you know, investigate while you're starting to do your design.
Sure. Yeah.
And I, my recommendation is that, you know, this is a sketch plan, but in order for Nadine and Darlene to progress and do a full application, you guys should discuss and agree to waive the amount of parking, either that you should provide five spaces or she should provide six spaces. That way they can go ahead and design it. I just wanted to let you guys know that I had recommended option three as well. I think it most closely follows the guidelines. I think that having the access on the left side of the site will work with the state sidewalk plan and the two oh nine guidelines very well.
The problem, it calls for eleven parking spaces, right?
That's the full requirement if you consider the full square footage of the building and the planning board. And then the code goes on to say that the planning board can adjust that based on the circumstances of the application.
Understood.
I guess my question would be to Darlene is, I mean, she's had this business in Carhonksen now for a few years. And I was just wondering what her, you know, would she ever have her parking lot full? Or, you know, what kind of parking you really requirements were? I mean, this is pretty much a, just a repositioning of the existing business in the same basic area. Different town, but same, same hamlet. So I don't know, Darlene, if you had, I don't know how many parking spots you had previously and was it sufficient and that sort of thing?
Um, well, where I am now, you know, there's more parking, but you know, the delivery van. So I'd say there, there's probably, if there was all cars parked there, there's probably four to five there because I'm in the suburban propane building. And where it was before, there was no real designated parking. If you've been to the old location, it's probably about the same thing. So the, you know, the delivery van drives up to the side, you know, or the side door. And so that's why we were planning on that spot for that one. But really, Mother's Day, Valentine's Day is when, the only time when, you know, there's more than, you know, one or two cars pulling in and out at a time. It's basically, you know, a drop off pickup kind of thing. So there's never really, you know, more than that, more than a few cars at a time.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that, Darlene. I mean, you have, you have the experience of what you had in the past. And, you know, you know, your business. I know that our our requirements are there, but extenuating circumstances. And this is, like you said, an existing business that has some experience to, you know, for us to rely on. So I don't personally see any reason that, you know, I would say try to get that other, you know, another parking spot or two in there if you can during design. But I don't see a, a real problem with waiver. I wouldn't say that now would be the time for the waiver until we get a design in front of, you know, a more formal design in front of us. But personally, I don't think there's an issue as far as I'm concerned.
I agree with you, Don.
Would the board like to waive the two oh nine requirement of seventy percent of the parking in the front of the building?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with this layout. I mean, looking at the overall map, it really is, you know, the setbacks are varied all through that whole area. So I don't see it as, you know, anything that would be glaring, glaringly different and wouldn't fit in with that area.
Do we need a motion, Mary Lou?
The waiver?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that we'd want to do that at this point. I think if we, at the sketch plan phase, I would think we'd want to wait on any waivers later. I think if we give them direction that this basic layout is okay, then I think with the indication that, yeah, a waiver will be strongly considered and so on. I don't know. Mary Lou, what do you think?
Well, I think, you know, maybe not on the number of spots, but on the location. I think that's kind of important to Nadine's design and how she moves forward. So if you're going to change the location requirements from the guidelines, I think it would be appropriate to do at least that much now.
Or if we just go ahead and can approve this sketch, then that would more or less authorize her to go forward with this layout.
No, no, it has to be a specific motion. We don't really have sketch. Sketch is what we have in subdivisions. This isn't a subdivision. This is just our, our information at one of our first looks.
So therefore, so therefore it would be more appropriate to have a a fully designed site based upon our discussion rather than giving actual waivers and so on on something that hasn't been designed.
So what are you saying? You want a whole new plan for option number three?
No, just have her, have them move forward with the plan three with a complete site plan submission.
She's not going to obtain any more parking than what she already has. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, and Don, there are two separate issues. One is the location of the parking where we don't meet the design guidelines with seventy percent being in the rear. So and we definitely will not do that. So if, if the board is comfortable with that understanding and waiving that will be the first step for us. And if, if the discussion, I mean, we would love the waiver, obviously, from, you know, a reduction from eleven to what is feasible on the site and a not less than number, we could definitely make some adjustments or, you know, with more detailed information, make that happen. But the waiver, as far as the design guidelines and that seventy percent in the rear, we would really like to get that established so that that doesn't come back at some point and say, you know what, this isn't what we wanted. And, and the applicant's already spent ten thousand dollars on the design.
Yep, understand. Okay, I can, I can go along with that. If you look at the back page of my memo under the recommended actions, I kind of laid out steps that you guys could take. And my suggestion would be that first act on a motion that you prefer option three. Then for, for the second step, I would say that you're not ready to waive or for number two is you would, you would waive the design guideline of seventy percent behind the building. I think you agree on those two things. And then for three, rather than act on a parking waiver, you should say that you would prefer that they provide one additional space than is shown in option three. And that's a preference. And that you'll, you'll reserve judgment until you see the final design. And then step four would be to ask them to complete, when they do a full application, to give all the information that the planner recommended in the memorandum.
Right.
And that, and that would be, that would be my suggestion, sort of is how to handle the approval tonight to get us moving forward, but not tying you down on a specific number of waived spaces.
I absolutely agree with Jonathan.
Okay, I'll make that motion that we, we go along with first and second recommendation from Jonathan of approving the sketch plan and waiving the two oh nine design guidelines based upon option three. I'll second it, Dr. Longstein.
All in favor? Oppose? Karen? I think we probably, since we're going to wait for a completed plan, we could skip the sequel.
You can't do sequel yet because you're still under sketch.
Right.
Yeah. Mary Lou, do we have to notify the town of Rochester?
Yes.
At this point, that's when you, you'll notify them when you schedule a public hearing. You have to notify Rochester because I think we're close enough to the, the town line. We'll have to refer it to the Ulster County Planning Board because it's a long two oh nine. But I don't think we're ready to do that yet because we don't have complete plans.
Okay.
All right. Nadine, is there anything else you need?
No, no, thank you very much because this definitely gives us a direction and we will develop this plan into something, you know, and provide all the details you guys require.
Yep. And Nadine, I would like to see as much parking you can. I like Don's idea about parking in the back. Because in twenty years or thirty years, whenever Darlene decides to retire, they're going to take a different business there.
On, um.
So.
Yeah. We will. We'll squeeze in as many as we can, for sure. Thank you so much.
Clearing the scene. She'll have a better perspective. Good night.
I'll be back. Night.
Mill and Main Restaurant.
So I'm here again with the applicant and the applicant is on as well. Paul Weathered and Corey Sodori. And I see that Chris Weathered is on and Hamish is also on. So we did receive Jonathan's comments and just really quickly, now this is really the hamlet of Carhonksen right down on Main Street in Carhonksen. The applicant's been renovating an existing building there. The second floor of the existing building is residential and they are looking to develop the first floor level into a restaurant and retail. So that's where our site plan and special use permit application comes in. We received the comments from Jonathan. So I know there's concerns about the floodway. We're right adjacent to the Rondell Creek. There were some concerns about parking. So I, you know, it's really helpful if anybody has the plan or the narrative that was provided that the applicant has shown kind of a photo of the building and what the, you know, the layout of the inside is going to be because that's going to be very helpful. Going through the comments from Jonathan, this building basically is right on the property line of this lot, the front line. There's sidewalks in front of it. There's parking on Main Street. And I'm sure we've all had this conversation about growing up in Carhonksen and what Main Street used to be with the grocery store and a laundromat and the liquor store and everything else that was down there and you'd park on the street. So that's really the same situation. And I don't believe the town has a lot So that's really the same situation and I don't believe the town has a lot of the parking defined on the street, but there will be no onsite parking proposed because there is no, there is no onsite for parking.
That's been conversations that I have had on my end, so we're, we're aware of that.
Okay, yes. Yep. So we did do a, a brief calculation of what onsite parking requirements would be. And the numbers are, are pretty high, but that being said, with, with the parking on, on Main Street itself, there's, there's quite an area for it, even though there's nothing striped or marked. There's, there's quite a bit. Does anybody have questions on that or?
Yeah, this is Don again. I do have a question. I mean, it, it was listed as existing as a apartment building?
Yes, there are two renovated apartments upstairs that I actually just got done giving them their temporary certificate of occupancy for them. They were renovated and
So, so my, my only concern is, yeah, it's as far as the business is concerned, I don't have an issue. My issue is the residential part and specifically for the winter because cars have to be off the, off the town highways by a certain hour until a certain hour.
Well, let's, I'm not, those buildings were pre-existing buildings from back in the nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties. There's always been apartments with storefronts below. So the use has not changed. And the parking in the, in the hamlet of Carhonson has not changed. The post office used to be there. So as far as delineations of parking spaces, if you were to go into downtown Carhonson right now, you're correct. You're not going to see the white lines of where the delineation of where the parking spaces are. However, there is parking in downtown Carhonson.
And, but, but what happens with during the winter when they need to plow, where do the cars go? Overnight?
Well, there's, there's more parking than like the parking right along the street there.
Okay.
Across the street, there is, someone else may know as well.
Right in the center there.
Right, in, in the center, there's like a, a parking aisle.
Right.
And who, who, who's that municipal lot there?
It technically is a town road.
So the parking that's in the middle there is like?
It's not privately owned. It's a town road.
It's a, it's owned by the town.
You have Fordmore Road and you have Main Street there. And what's the other road, Tony? Yeah, there's like three little streets that all, they parallel one another.
Okay, but there is parking in that center, that parallel area, isn't it?
Right, that's what we're talking about. And that is.
Yeah, there's parking.
Yeah, and that's town owned.
Okay, so, so in reality, if, and, and Tony, if you can hear, correct me if I'm wrong, then that is almost like a park, a town parking lot that would be out of the way of plowing the streets?
No.
He says no.
Okay.
You hear him?
There can be, there can be, you know, alternate side of the street parking for snow removal. It's done in cities all the time where there's no off-street or where there is on-street parking. So maybe there needs to be some guidelines developed specifically. However, this, there are many apartments in the buildings that are there on the second floor that park there now in the winter. So there must be something already in place where these cars get moved so that the town can plow.
Tony, do you, what, what are, do you have any issues up there?
Hold on, Tony's coming.
Here's, here's how it is. When we plow down there, those cars park usually in front of the stores. Now we gotta plow by them. You know? Sometimes you don't go back and plow because they got, they parked there. Then they'll park out and we have to go back and clean it up. I mean, it's, it's theoretically, you're not supposed to be parked in town roads in the winter time.
Right.
Theoretically, but we, you know, we've been doing it for years, going back and forth.
Okay.
Is it the right way? I couldn't tell you. If somebody falls, who is responsible?
Yep, I, I understand. I was just wondering if you had any, you know, if you had any ideas of, of, you know, not putting it on this applicant, but at least starting to resolve the issue in a positive way, whether it's, as Nadine said, alternate, alternate side of the street parking signs or something to that extent. But, you know, again, just to, yeah, it's, it's a residential area, but, you know, this is a good time to talk about it. And is there anything that, that the town can do to help the residents and, and, you know, this applicant in parking for the, for, for winter?
Certainly something needs to be done i- in, in that if you followed the codes, literally, nothing could be developed, not even the residences.
Right.
Your site. You'd have to, the building would have to be empty because it doesn't have parking for anything.
But the thing is, is that you can't put that on the onus of the property owner.
That's true because it already.
A hamlet that, that is, that should have delineation parking. So we can't put that on them.
No.
No, it's a, it's a problem with the code. Many hamlets and villages and cities in their downtowns don't require any parking on site because of this.
Right. Yeah, and I, and I don't, I don't see any, the only place I could see would be possibly parking in the right of way, but again, I don't know what the, if there's any, you know, any restrictions on the right of way or anything like that, but especially since it's only two apartments. But again, I don't think there's anything we can really require the applicant to do since it's a, it's a remodel of an existing condition. I appreciate that they're making the lot bigger to become more in conformance with the code. But I was just, thought it would be a, a good opportunity to discuss parking up in that area. To.
And when, when this applicant was first interested in this, the supervisor and I did talk about that a little, but now it's been some time. So I'd be happy to talk to the supervisor again about, you know, how do we make all of this redevelopable? You know, that's, that's our goal. So, and, and he was, you know, very open to let's figure out what we could do because everybody wants to see those buildings revitalized.
Right, exactly. We don't want to be standing in the way of, of revitalization and, and making that hamlet vital again. So.
And Don, you know, we'll just note also that to the, the west of this property, there are some vacant properties which at one time had buildings on them, you know. Most of them were residential with storefronts. Again, some were all apartment buildings that were condemned and taken down right around the time the, you know, prior to and around the time that the bridge was done in Carhonson. So think about all of the uses that had been there at one time. You know, this is, this is minor in comparison, but yeah.
I agree.
Like you said, it is something for the town to address. Obviously, it is an issue for them, parking on the street. And I'm sure whatever guidelines they enact, you know, all the residents will have to comply to that as far as moving their cars or, or things to that nature.
Right.
Nadine.
Frank wanted to say something.
Okay, Frank.
Yeah, I, I'm going to have a, a meeting with Tony down there tomorrow and see what kind of possible solutions we can come up with as far as parking and, and keeping the road clear for plowing everything.
Okay, great. Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Yes, I was there today. Nadine, how many tables or how many people would be sitting in the restaurant?
Sure. So right now, the plan is, I know this is on my plan somewhere. The restaurant I have it, is twelve hundred square feet and the town parking is, is one space per fifty square feet, which is twenty-four spaces. Claudia, maybe you can even talk about your preliminary layout as far as the seating. So I know they have several booths, a bar area and a couple of open tables. What is the, what is the seating count that you're showing right now?
Sure, this is Paul. There are thirty-six seats and then twelve seats at the bar. So that would bring us to.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, forty-eight.
Okay, it's twelve, not seven in your narrative for the project. It says seven.
Uh.
Seats at the bar.
Yeah, there's, oh, that's twelve, that's seven at the bar itself. But there's actually the, the area next to the bar that's not bar space, but sort of counter space in the front, so to the side of the bar.
It's what we're calling sort of like a holding.
So according, according to the, the State Liquor Authority, that has to be considered bar space, even though it's, it's not at the bar.
It's.
The, the storage building in the back where the deck might be going, is that coming down staying?
Yeah, so we can speak to that a little bit and based on Jonathan's comments, it did prompt us to send in another sketch. It did try to circulate it to everybody, a PDF with some red lines as far as a rear patio and reducing the shed space. So they would like to keep a shed in that location, but reduce the square footage to about half. So there still would be a shed, but allow an area for patio for outdoor seating as well. So what we did with our calculations was, you know, show based on the existing lot size, what the coverage is, and it was approximately sixty percent. So with the proposed lot line adjustment, which now includes the shed, but if we reduce the size of the shed and provide a patio, we can still keep that sixty percent coverage, but it just, it changes from, from what's there now.
And how many tables are going to be on the patio?
Tables. There's seating.
You're gonna serve outside?
Yeah.
Sorry?
Yes, the intent, the intent is to have outdoor seating.
Twenty and to serve twenty best.
Seating for twenty-two people.
So you're gonna have twenty-two people, so potentially sixty people?
They have under a restaurant layout, total of seventy.
That's it.
Seventy.
Yeah.
And you, do we have parking for potentially seventy people there in the, in the cross streets and all the ways parked and configured now?
I can't say that.
We did not include, well, seventy people.
I don't know.
It's based on, it's based on square footage, so we did not add the patio area, but I can tell you quickly how many that would be because it's still the fifty per foot, so eight hundred divided by fifty.
The aerial view.
Spaces.
The aerial view on, on the PDF comments and stuff, the, the lot's packed right now. You know, I don't know what it's like other times, but I mean, I'm looking at the picture of your, of Mr. Lockman's PDF that we got, and that lot is packed.
What do you mean by packed?
Well, you look at where the, all the street, the municipal lot that I was talking about before, you know, across from the firehouse there.
Oh, no, that's not the municipal lot. That where you see those cars, that's privately owned by.
Yeah, that's the service place there. Yeah, okay.
If you go to the left of that.
That eases my mind.
Okay, yeah, no, no. To the left of that, there's a.
Oh, that's the Tony company. Yeah, that's Filippo's.
Right, that's private. So, so you see the red box, right? The, well, the red box, that's in sight. So right in front of it on the sidewalk, there's parking. Then there's the street. And then on the other side of the street in front of just sort of a little park area, there's parking there as well.
Okay, good.
I kind of roughly counted and I'm not an engineer and I don't know the width of a car, but I kind of counted what was there. They had three vehicles from the building and using a ball of, the eyeball came up with a roughly with ten on each side. So I.
I can't hear you. What did you say? How much on each side?
Ten on each side, ten starting from the beginning of the doorway to the left on the partial viewer that I saw facing and ten opposite that same side. So yeah. So on, starting with three, three, one, going to the left, I counted that you could probably get ten cars.
Better picture.
Yes.
And directly across from it, you could get ten cars in front of that area there.
Like, can you see, because right in here is where the municipal parking is, supposed to be anyway. Okay, but it's not delineated, okay? But there are parking spaces in here. It actually was two here. The Feinberg building is over here. There was parking over here. So there definitely was a lot of parking on Main Street. It's just not delineated right now.
So I think if we speak to, maybe.
That's why Mary Lou said that she was having a conversation with the supervisor and they will, in fact, you know, continue to have conversations and that's why Frankie and Tony are going tomorrow.
Just here.
What, where are you pointing, Tony?
Right here, you know, far amongst the firehouse.
Right, oh, okay.
From here over.
From this point?
That way, yeah.
Okay.
Everything from here across the street amongst the firehouse.
Okay, did you guys hear, Tony?
Yeah, but, okay. Right, I know part of that is firehouse. Nadine, have you talked, I mean, it doesn't look like there's a lot of room over there with, with the garage, but have you talked with either the, the fire department or Filippo's about maybe using some of their parking?
Um, no, because it, we do not know exactly what is owned by the town and other than what we see in the parcel viewer, we do not know who exactly owns to what extent because.
That's not always correct either.
All right, the parcel viewer is a little exaggerated and, and we, so we don't know. So we would like to have that determination from the town, what, what they know to be their municipal parking areas. And they, we would be happy to help evaluate that as far as, you know, the parking sizes and some overlays to be able to, you know, lay out how many spaces and, you know, have the travel lanes and, you know, if, if it works out for the town where, you know, that there's a loop around and there's, you know, one way so you can have more parking on the sides of the streets. I, I'm not really sure what the answer is. But I do know that, yes, like you said, over by the firehouse and then behind all those cars that are in Filippo's, I believe some of that along Main Street may belong to that parcel as well. May not belong to the town, but you know, we don't.
Yeah, that's something that the.
Don't know what the town owns.
Yeah, actually, actually, I don't know that, I mean, I think, I think this is a town issue. I don't know that it's a applicant's issue. It's, I look at this and say, this is a zone that is, allows these, these uses. And I, there is no, be based on the lots, the lot size and so on, there really is no real option for them to provide any on off-street parking. It's an area that it has been nothing more than a, a downtown area that doesn't have any parking lots. So I don't see where we can require or we'd want. Or we'd want to require the applicant to provide off-street parking. The town has to delineate and figure out how to. Allow for down parking downtown and. Rules and regulations so that they can provide snow removal and so on. But I don't really think it's within the purview of the applicant to have to figure that out and. Make a condition of the application, that's my opinion anyway.
We're of the same opinion.
The other thing that I would add is that it's possible that. Some adjustments in the vill- in the town code are in order. That it, that it may be unreasonable to require. You know, these part, these, these parcels on Main Street in Carhongson. To have the sa- to have this type of parking requirement at all. Because if you want to redevelop the hamlet like the way it was. In the days when it was a vibrant place with lots more stores and apartments in this Main Street.
It worked.
And it, it never had parking lots behind the buildings, so. If you wanna go back to, to those days, you need to have codes that reflect that.
We can't go back to those days because at that point. Families had one, maybe two cars, now they have two, three, four cars, so. You know, unfortunately, we can't go back to those times, but.
Family-owned businesses, you know, where the. You know, in the day, we also have to make sure that the fire company can get in and out when there's. Be a lot of cars.
Yeah, well, there can't be any blocking in front of the. There isn't quite of a distance between there and there, I mean, looking at it here aerial, it looks like it's close, but. In reality, it's not really close at all.
They have to exit out of the.
Excuse me?
You're gonna go to Forty Second Street? I mean, I just wanna make sure that the fire companies has space to get back.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of space, I mean, there's a lot of space there.
One thing I want, this is Claudia, um, thanks, everybody, this is a good conversation, it was the first thing that I was, you know, top of mind when we. Purchased the building and, and as Mary Lou said, I reached out really early on to discuss parking options, but anyway. One thing, if it, if it helps, we are a dinner-only restaurant, a- at least right, at least right now, that is the plan. So during the day, I don't anticipate that we're gonna have a lot of parking needs.
On here, Jonathan, hold on a second, here comes Tony, I want you to redo that, please.
Yeah, if you look. From here. To here. There's eighty-eight feet and the cars are twenty feet long. So if you take forty, you, you still have forty-eight feet of road, even with. A car parked here that's twenty feet long and a car parked there that's twenty feet.
Yeah, I'm referring more so towards Forty Second Street where it bottlenecks.
Right in there?
I don't know if, yeah, where the arrows, I don't know if they, if there's any parking.
Oh, no, there was never parking here.
Okay, so then there's not an issue.
There was never parking, that's where you come in.
But also, considering, you know. All of the villages and hamlets in the world, uh, Carhongston. Carhongston's got the widest Main Street of them all at forty-eight feet.
For, for parking and the parking.
Tony would like you to put that back, Jonathan, back over to, um, by the firehouse, please.
You know, I don't know if the town at all has considered, and I know it's not the planning board's purview, but maybe with these discussions.
Take twenty from here.
Yeah.
Now you take, what, be forty feet for the truck? Now you gotta back into there or pull out.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, that's true. But the fire company, they back up here, when they pull in their trucks, they back it up.
They pull up here and they back again.
Right, they, or they go this way and they go that way, I've watched. You're right.
You got eighty-five feet here.
Hey, hey guys, I don't think the town lot makes a Minnesota parking lot. Cause there's lots of insurance and lots of problems there, when you come to Minnesota parking lot. I have a feeling that probably gonna stay, let it stay the way it is, go from there. Why don't you do a Minne- Minnesota parking lot to hold them ballgame? Am I right, guys?
No, I think, I think it's a Main Street, if you delineated parking along the street. It isn't really a municipal lot, it's basically parking along, on-street parking.
Well, wait a minute, then.
Yeah, I said municipal lot, but it, uh, it was clarified after, that it's not.
The, the town board has the power in its codes to designate on-street parking. On streets and almost a- a- any town, if you look in their code, has a chapter. Called streets and it'll designate, you know, Main Street from point X to point Y, you can park. Parole Park here and, 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 and they can put up stop signs and, and, and designate. No parking or yes parking. So the, the, uh, if the town board wants parking along the street, they can.
So you're ta- you're talking chapter one oh four?
You have to pass a, a town code.
Right, again, that's not really anything that we need to discuss here.
So, I mean, so that being said, I think that. The consensus is that obviously. On-street parking is allowable in this district and for this site because. And I know that it was mentioned about making this lot bigger, if maybe we can just touch on the lot line adjustment really quickly. We did submit earlier, yesterday, a. We received the subdivision map from the surveyor. So we did submit that, that, so you guys can see what that is, and then we did update the zoning with regard to. The, how it affects both the lots.
When did, when did you get the maps? Cause you didn't send them in, submit it to us.
I did, I, not hard copy, I just submitted just for discussion for tonight, I submitted a PDF.
It went to you guys, it, it was emailed to everybody yesterday, Nadine?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
It did go to you.
I do have it up if, if I can share my screen or.
You know what, I, I just put it up.
There you go, there it is, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is the, this is the site plan that we submitted just to show the change to the shed and the patio location. And then we also submitted a map that was prepared by Don Brewer. But this, this shows the density schedule updated for the new lot, so. The new, making this lot larger does not make the other lot less. Less the requirements at all, because this is. A quarter acre zoning, so that lot is still a little greater than a quarter acre, does not affect any of the setbacks. That are already there, because the lot line along the building stays exactly the same, the rear yard stays the same. So. So this and the, the survey map from Don Brewer does illustrate that.
And the, and the patio is this stippled surface outlined in red.
Yes, so that would allow. Access directly to the right-of-way to the street, um, so you, you don't have to come through the building, you can come to the back. I do know that Claudia and Paul had mentioned that there may be some requirements as far as fencing. Because of serving liquor with their liquor license, so there may have to be fencing or gating. Uh, to secure the backyard area and we'll, we'll have to get those details in order for our next.
Where is, how is garbage gonna be handled?
Right, so.
Dumpster, garbage cans.
Yeah, it's mostly going to be a more frequent. Garbage removal from the site. I didn't know someone else was talking, because of the limited. Access and a limited area to store dumpsters and have access to dumpsters.
Right.
So the, so the trash storage is going to be of a smaller nature and, and a higher frequency.
What's this, what's here to there?
What do you mean, Robin?
What's on the distance between here and there? Cause I can't.
Can't, we can't see what you mean between, by here and there.
Here to here, the alleyway, what's the width of the alleyway?
Oh, the alley, yeah, it's only, I wanna say it's. Twelve feet, ten, ten or twelve feet, it's not very much at all.
Yeah, I would guess to make twelve feet.
It's, yeah, it's barely the, it, you can, you can fit a dumpster. In that alleyway as that's, that's been the sort of standard, um, way the building next door has been storing their, their dumpster there, but you can. Barely walk by on either side of a dumpster.
Okay, so your guests, are they gonna be walking down this road or are they gonna enter through the building and? Cause I see the red area goes to the right-of-way or.
There's, that's, that's, the, the intention is, is to have. Access to the patio from inside. But also for those who choose either wheelchair accessible. Or if people wanna walk down, walk in that way. You can come in through the alleyway also.
So your dumpster is gonna be in the line of sight or the garbage cans?
The intention right now is to actually have some sort of enclosure that will have not a big. Because the trucks cannot get to the back.
Right.
To empty, to service a dumpster, so to use smaller mobile. Containers that can be moved up, up front when, when pickup time comes around.
All right, can we mark that on the next, uh, plan? I'd like to see where.
This is Hamish here, I ca- I can tell you.
You speaking?
Uh, Hamish wanna partner with Claudia and Paul.
Oh, hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you? On the plan on the screen right here, the, the steps that are shown on the back at the right-hand side. Yes, those steps are, are being removed because there won't be access. A door there anymore, so that's where the dumpsters will, will be housed and then they'll be rolled out. But we can't do a full-size dumpster like the size that is currently being used because it doesn't fit down the. The alleyway, so we're thinking maybe the medium-sized ones that are actually rollable. Rather than the full-size ones that, that are picked up. With, with the two forks.
Right, and in the summertime when it's really hot out, the trash is not gonna smell for the patio guests?
I don't think so, because they won't be dining in that right-of-way, they'll be much further in.
I have a question, where is the access to the apartments?
Right here.
On the, on the Main Street side.
Pointing right here.
So, uh, right there. On the restaurant layout, it's there between the restaurant and the mill and main provisions.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's several doors on the front side of that building, so I believe the ones in the center go up to the apartments. And then there's one on each side to access the, the lower levels.
Right, thank you.
I, I have a facade plan that was just submitted to me today, it's part, yeah, okay, perfect, okay. So the restaurant. Here. Wait a minute.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay, no, the plan that I was given today, okay, right here shows. It's all right, doesn't look right, okay, so that the, the two doors will be here for the restaurant. Okay, this is the door here for the apartment and then this is the door here for the provisions. And then this is the alleyway.
Right, right.
You can see the dumpster in the alley right now.
If you're gonna have walkers there, you're gonna have to pile that alley with.
And the residents use dumpster for their trash?
Yes.
They will be, but yes, and we're, we're, we're working with the next-door neighbor to find a different solution for where that dumpster goes. Because obviously that's a right-of-way and that should never have been there. That's the neighbor's dumpster. So traditionally, it was, it apparently was on the other alleyway between the firehouse and, and her building. But at some point, it started being moved over. To here, so when we bought the building, that's where it was where it had always been. And with the, uh, the waterworks that were done, they needed access to that alleyway, so it has never been moved back.
So you both have, you both have permission, permission of that right-of-way?
I believe the right-of-way between the firehouse and her building is her right-of-way. And the right-of-way, that alleyway is actually our right-of-way.
Yeah, that alleyway is owned by the building on the right.
Yeah.
But it's the right-of-way to the applicant's building on the left, to their rear yard. So it, it should not be blocked by either occupant, so, uh, yes, but. You know, along with the slot line adjustment with the neighbor on the right and moving the, the dumpster, now that things are changing in the neighborhood. You know, they're all working together to kinda make it. Make it flow a little bit better.
Do we know who owns the land next to, to the left of the building?
Yes.
Is it privately owned?
The, uh, the plan shows Sky Island Incorporated, I don't know who that is.
Actually, Sky Island owns the building to the right of us. And the buil- the land to the left is owned by Irene Rocha.
The vacant lot. Yeah, the vacant lot, we do have from the survey that it was Sky Island Inc. and that Sterling Green Corp owns the building to the.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're correct, I was incorrect.
Well, everything to the left of this, uh, you could see very clearly there is all vacant. Maybe the town wants to, to buy it and build a parking lot.
Go there.
I have tons of great ideas. Yeah, so, you know, um, I know, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time talking about this and maybe just to kinda get back on track with. Some things to, to get this moving. I think by proposing the, the patio in the rear. Really deals with any concerns about, um, construction in the floodway. Because anything would just be at ground level, so we wouldn't be obstructing the, the floodway at all. We tried to keep the impervious cover. Equal, less than or equal to what it is currently. You know, and of course, we, we, the town can jump in on that anytime. As far as lighting and landscaping, it, it will be very minimal. But we will definitely, you know, as we develop this patio and, um, we can discuss what other landscaping in and around that. Whether it be mulch beds or gravel or landscape beds or screening, we, we can add that to the plan for sure and. You know, just moving forward, uh, the applicant is working on, you know, floor plan to, to submit. And obviously, the, the building facade plans have already been submitted to the building department, we can share with the planning board as well, moving forward. The seeker submission, I don't know if, um, the planning board wants to discuss seeker. Tonight and just as far as moving forward. As far as, you know, us as the engineer with the site plan, there's very, very limited improvement to this site. You know, just kind of cleaning up that backyard, um, in the front, it'll be the, the facade and some lighting. So we don't have really a lot, I feel like that we're gonna present and like you just asked for, you know. Show a little bit about where the garbage is going to be, uh, stored.
The apartment's garbage.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Really, a- and in terms of, of my memorandum, the biggest issue that I feel that you need to give guidance on, you really already have, is the fact that they are not providing any onsite parking and can't provide any onsite parking.
Right.
Uh other than that, there's really very little going on here.
It's only that.
Wait, so I guess, you know, we are looking for the planning board to give some acceptance to to the sketch plan um in consideration of, of making said shed smaller, obviously the lot line adjustment and uh patio addition. And um and, and to waive, obviously, the requirement for on, on site parking because it's just not at this location in the hamlet, we're relying on, on street parking.
What does our code say about the on-street parking in this area?
That's what I was just looking at.
Uh it does, there's the the
Not different than anywhere else.
Yeah.
It just says that um there is a parking requirement for all businesses. And there's a schedule. According to the schedule, the restaurant would need thirty-one parking spaces, that's just counting the interior spaces. The restaurant and store and the, and the apartments altogether, the interior of the building would require thirty-one parking spaces. There would be even more required for the patio, but that wasn't included in the initial submission, so and then there's a, in the parking code, it says the planning board can waive parking spaces depending on the circumstances. Just like uh the way you had to consider the parking waiver for the lake property, a few blocks away on two oh nine, so uh but there, there is no uh specific parking, different parking requirement for downtown Hamlets.
All right, so potentially, what is our maximum number of parking spaces with the patio and the apartment buildings?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven?
And that's, you know, that is based on square footage right off the bat, if we did it on, you know, a different way, if we considered the number of seats. Um you know, we could possibly present something a little bit different. But uh
It, a, a lot of communities will use a, a parking requirement for restaurants. That's one for every four seats or one for every five seats. On that basis, if you had I think, let's say you had forty, forty-two seats.
Seventy, seventy altogether, I think.
Seventy seats.
Yeah.
That would be about
Eighteen spaces?
Fifteen sixteen, seventeen cars. Um if you did it on a seat basis, you'd come out with a, with a much more reasonable number. Uh as a practical matter, I think it's much more likely that if they, if every table at the restaurant were full and there are people at the bar uh and a few people shopping and the people upstairs had their cars there that you know, there'd probably be about twenty cars involved, not forty.
And that includes the employees?
Yeah, I'm just guesstimating, I'm not the applicant.
Robin, do you, you know, I'm, look, I'm for businesses, I'm for the, you know, it sounds like a great plan, I, I just um do we have the parking there, do we have twenty spaces there?
Frankie and um Tony are gonna do tomorrow.
Okay, so they're gonna look at that tomorrow and then Mary Lou and uh the town board will get together for what's going on in this area, how to, you know. Okay, so we, I guess we need more information.
We, we also have to keep in mind that the funeral home for years no parking at all, so.
Yeah, when the funeral home was down there, it didn't have any parking, no.
And then uh where it is now, there is no parking except for
Well, at one point in time, you had the funeral home, you had the liquor store, you had the post office, you had a restaurant.
A beauty shop.
A beauty shop.
It looks like you got, you got parking on both sides. Which is good. Is there parking on the uh opposite side now or is?
Well, because it, there's actually no delineation of lines, it looks like it's a main road, but it's not.
Yeah, we don't know.
Yeah, traditionally, there was parking.
Eighty feet from here.
I can remember, I can remember there were lines right here, I can remember that.
Yes, there were, I remember that also, Robin.
There were lines here and it went all the way down. Okay, and then there was lines in front of Feinberg's building, which is over here. And then when we created this other hook in the front down by Main Street, we didn't have that turnaround.
And then
Go the other direction.
And uh what about this parking lot?
That's owned by the firehouse.
That's the firehouse.
Okay, and does anyone, I mean, I, I don't wanna to, 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 I, I, I don't wanna get on the wrong side of the fire department. But it, it, it is owned by the municipality, right?
No, it's their property.
So the, it's a separate entity, a fire district owns that lot.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Get that.
But if you go back up here to the street, we didn't have this. This got created years later.
And you know, again
Island in between where the monument is.
Right, that's, that's the little park, cause the little park that's there.
And eighty feet is a lot of space.
Right.
You have, you can have uh ninety-degree parking spaces here and you'd still have a very wide travel way.
Yeah, that's what I was looking when they showed the other view.
Right.
It would be wider than most, it would be as wide as the travel way on two oh nine.
When that was a busy parking area, doesn't it look like that area, that parking area to the left was designed for parking for
And it was.
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah, cause you can see how it notches out, yep.
Yeah, it was, it's just that the lines haven't been maintained throughout the years, once the post office left, when, when summer closed her business, there, it, it wasn't needed anymore.
Right, so
We would be happy
But it was designed for that purpose.
Right.
We would be happy to map out um how many spaces, you know, at the, the size requirement that the town has and, and you know, access roads, you know, minimum with, uh what's required. The only problem is, I, it's obvious that the town owns in front of this building and that park area into the other municipal street. Um it's just not clear between the firehouse and Filippo's where Main Street ends and Filippo's property begins, whether he still owns part of that pavement area or not. And um that's, that's the question I think needs to be answered to determine actually how much room the municipality has for, for parking. And, and like, we'd be happy to, to help lay that out.
It also could go the other way, it could be that De Filippo's is encroaching on the municipal land with these cars on the grass, you know, I don't know where that line is.
I guess the fact-finding mission will be
Yeah, and I mean, if you, if you look at the parcel viewer, um although it's not accurate, that is not what the parcel viewer indicates at all.
It looks like there's plenty of parking just up to the two buildings there from Forty-Second Street.
Yeah, and that's the thing, there, there is significant parking, is there thirty spaces, is there forty-six spaces, is there twenty, like we don't really know, and then do we count what's in front of the other buildings, but then you gotta think they will have residents too, so
Yeah, like Frank, like, like Tony is saying right now, they're gonna look tomorrow.
Right.
No sense of trying to figure it out without they'll definitely figure it out tomorrow. Yeah, well, they'll find out exactly where the town property is and then where this is. Yeah.
That'd be great.
And then we'll get back, you we'll have conversations as to where we stand as far as where the lines are.
And I'm not gonna talk to the supervisor until Tony and Frank, you know, get back. And give us some idea what's actually there, so, so Frank and Tony, if you could let me know. I would surely appreciate that.
I have one question before we go because um I know the, other than anybody who opened their PDF in the board, I'm sorry, Robin, that you didn't see it.
Well, it's just very, very small, so if you could blow it up.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get you everything, you know, to scale and what you need hard copies.
Thank you.
Just for discussion, so um Don Brewer prepared the lot line adjustment, he prepared a boundary survey for this parcel and um shows the lot line adjustment between this parcel and the neighboring parcel. Did not complete a full boundary survey of the neighboring parcel, so um we wanted to see if that was necessary or if what we submitted on uh Don's behalf is acceptable.
So are you asking for a waiver?
Are you muted?
Don, yeah, you're muted.
Yeah, I, I think what you submitted, you know, just recently would be acceptable for a site plan. And uh, you know, we'll, we'll need to work out the parking in the front.
No, 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 she's asking for the lot line, are you asking for a waiver?
Yeah, so, yeah, cause we do have two kinds of separate issues that the board has to consider, one is the lot line adjustment and the waiver would be from showing the full bounds of the other parcel.
So that's what you're asking for.
Oh, okay.
Outside of the, the lines that we're interested in.
So, Mary Lou, this becomes two planning board issues rather than just one.
Yeah.
Yes.
It is.
We
Yes, you have a lot line adjustment and a site plan.
They haven't submitted a, a full uh lot line change application at this point.
No, we did.
You do.
Yeah, I think they did, yep.
They're asking for is a waiver for not surveying the whole entire property, that's what they're asking for.
The neighbor's property.
I would, I would say not only because this is going to be a, a, an actual description of property, you're you're changing the boundaries of two properties, we should really have a survey of both properties. So they could be described and then a uh proper uh boundary determined for filing.
Yeah.
So, so you're, so no to the waiver?
Yeah, I would, I would say we would need to have the uh, uh since it's, you know.
You have a second on that?
Yeah, it wouldn't have to be at the same scale, but we would still need to have a, a uh, a survey of that, of both properties. Correct, Mary Lou?
I actually don't think they need it, I think the county would accept it with um, with that lot, without the remainder, but, but how big is it, I mean, it's not like it's usually when we give a waiver for something like that, we're talking about, you know, the neighbor has eighty-three acres and it was
Well, it only came up when they were closing on it, they thought that they owned the building all along.
And shed, yeah.
Yeah, but my question is about how big are we talking about with the
Not very.
With the neighboring property.
It's just over a quarter acre.
Yeah.
Yeah, so seeing as it's that, that's small, I, I would think that we would not want to waive that.
Right.
I guess, and in, in my memorandum, what I had raised in point six was I wanted to know, make sure that by conveying to pilot light Sterling Green wasn't making itself more non-conforming. So I guess my concern is that I wanna be certain that it's really true that, that Sterling Green will still have point two-five acres after it conveys. But if you don't have a
That's a very good point.
Green, then how would we know that we're not making that more non-conforming and that, that three or four tenths, three or four hundredths of an acre difference makes a difference.
Okay, all right, very good, we, we will get back to Don Brewer, let him know, um and hopefully we can just, still knowing um almost like a, a condition of getting the final for the lot line adjustment, but um I know that it's gonna be a little bit of time. Um I think, I think he was out for a little bit with an illness, so we will get that back on his schedule and um submit what we have to date to, to push things forward with Seeker and definitely make sure that that's something that we get in you know, for, for the final map approval.
And as, as far as Seeker goes, that's at least your problem is cause it's type two. And all I have to do is make a motion that it's a type two and then Seeker's over.
Okay, can we do that?
And when you reuse an existing building and you don't increase the structure by uh if you push by less than four thousand square feet, it's type two.
Okay.
So your, 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 your Seeker is easiest, easiest piece of this.
Well, we'll take it.
Some of the things that's confusing me is that there's um confusion that people wanting are the representatives present tonight or have permission to do the lot line and have mission authorization for this.
Yes, so there, there is not from anyone from Sterling Green here tonight. Uh we did get the owner's authorization form submitted, the owner's proxy form, so that's been submitted, it is on file. And I believe that Peak and Claudia and probably Paul were all listed on as a representation for them.
Yes, they were.
Great. Okay, does any help before we I think we need some more information and if you can address some of the numbers that Jonathan pointed out. Can see you.
So our, our mapping is basically, I mean, we can add a little bit landscaping on there, but as far as addressing, you know, what's happening in the floodplain and with the outdoor seating in the patio, um we, we could definitely resubmit in the next two weeks prior to the next meeting. Is there any way that we can, you know, at least get that vote on Seeker, Don, and possibly schedule a public hearing?
Can't you see?
I don't think we can, we can't, I don't think we can schedule a public hearing, and actually for a type two, you don't even need to vote. It's just
Okay.
It meets the, the type two criteria under um under Seeker and therefore it means you don't have to do any further re, environmental review.
So uh as far as, sorry if I'm being just a little pushy um with the public hearing. I mean, the parking, obviously, the, the town has to make some uh investigation on and that type of thing, but as far as um the, the site plan, the lot line you know, we've basically addressed the comments that Jonathan had sent, we just have to resubmit the hard copies uh with those changes. What else would be for discussion next month before scheduling a public hearing?
I'd kinda like to
I do think there is still a concern, I know you have talked to, to Mr. Brewer about the size of that lot because we have to know whether we have to send this to the zoning board.
Yeah, I, there, there won't be, and I'll, I'll tell you why, because even if, you know, there's a tenth of an acre that we can jog the line, we could do what we need to do to make sure that that the Sterling Green property does not get reduced in size, but we can definitely, you know, and understanding that that, you know, that won't happen, you know, no approvals will happen until the actual survey map is completed.
It's
I, I feel like there's still enough, we still need to hear from the town board. Because the town board has jurisdiction over parking on streets. That, that they are comfortable with parking on this street.
Hey, Chris, I got something to tell you guys, you might be talking rail trail property there too. Rail trail goes right up along that. Goes right, already, across Forty-Second, right on out to fifty-two, uh forty-four and fifty-five. Nobody thought about that, huh? That might be part of rail trail property.
We need more information.
Let's check on this tomorrow, just hold on.
So You guys wanna open your restaurant too and the season's coming right around the corner, so.
And, and the thing is, um you know, I, I do know, like, like they said And, and the thing is, um, you know, I, I do know, like, they said the applicants had come uh, to the town previously, so um, you know, it, it is something that we were hoping that the town maybe had uh, investigated a little bit before even the application was made. But that being said, um, you know, we need time to make our submission to get on the next agenda. So if we could be kept in the loop of any progress with the parking and concerns, we'd appreciate that so that we can make adjustments as necessary and uh, and address those, those concerns.
It still has to go to county too, so it'd be great if we could do that consecutive with the public hearing. If we can get an answer from the county, then we could move.
And, and Nadine, I know you said you're, you're going to add some landscaping, um, also because of the county, some, make sure we have the lighting. I know it's going to be very little.
Yes.
But we do have to have it.
Yep, and we definitely will. And like I said, you know, we definitely want to get that to you guys, um, you know, in advance of the next meeting. And if, you know, if there's going to be an issue with what is going to be allowable for this use based on what's allowable for on-street parking, you know, we definitely have to have that conversation with, with the owner and applicant so we can see, you know, what's, what's really feasible for the project and, and moving forward.
And on the garbage, uh, what are, you're going to store it in the summertime. What would be your ideas in the winter? Because you probably couldn't drag it up that alley, really, unless it's now the.
Yeah, that, that right away should be maintained as a uh, open pathway. One, because it is right between the bit, building, it is the only access to the rear of the building, so even, you know, for fire hazard, that maintained as a.
Okay, uh.
And I think that's something that should we end up moving forward to approval. I think that would be a, a condition of that approval.
And then uh, the fencing and other stuff would be on the, on the commission. Right, so um, I think we should have one more meeting. Do we go forward?
One more question. What, is there like, what like provisions are going to be sold? I think I read that, that besides a restaurant, they're going to be selling provisions.
Yep, so I, hopefully Paul and Claudia are still on, they can definitely address that, but they um, had conversation about um, local um, artisans and, you know, what they prepare and having their, you know, pre-prepared foods and items there for sale and they're on, so I'll let them speak.
So everything in the market provisions is uh, going to be designed for carryout. There'll be a coffee bar in the location, um, and then there'll be some, uh, yeah, baked goods uh, and then stall markets that will um, feature things from the area uh, producers. So that could be everything from maple syrup to uh, you know, handmade table linens, um, and perhaps some, some uh, ceramics. A food-centric is kind of what we're trying to keep uh, the feel of, of the market. And then we'll, we'll be preparing some, again, some, some foods that are already wrapped and packaged for um, for grab and go and, and carryout.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Sounds like it would go well with the rail trail customers.
Definitely, that's what we're hoping.
As long as it doesn't affect the parking.
That was included in the thirty-one parking requirements inside the building was the retail area.
Yeah, and you know, it's funny you should mention that, Jonathan, because I haven't been there lately, but when my son was little and we used to ride our bikes from Accor to Gahanxen, we'd make the little trip to Stewart's for ice cream. So it would be very nice to have another option right there to, to get some treats.
Right.
Okay, well, thank you all so much. This was a great conversation and um, we will, you know, move forward on the site plan, look forward to hearing on the parking.
Very good. We will keep you, we will keep you posted.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Night. Good night.
Taking motion on the last meeting.
I'm sorry?
Minutes on the last meeting motion.
I make that motion. Do we accept?
Motion by Mr. Brewer.
All second.
And Eric.
Second by Eric, all in favor.
Alright.
Motion to adjourn unless there's any discussion.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. So Don and Frank. Donald, Donald, um.
No, it was Doug.
It was really Doug.
Apologize.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Very.
Good night.
Good kids.
Hey, John. John?
Yeah.
Our meeting tomorrow, uh, people are going to be on Zoom or there in person?
You can do either.
No, I mean.
You'll be there at one thirty, right?
I will be there at one thirty.
Our guests will be on Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but at one thirty.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, alright, good night.
Good night.
Be there at one thirty. Right.